The workflow process, the independent auditor and consultant as far as it relates to our audit. I had Ashley help me with an all-call. All-call is an important tool towns use to check in with other towns and find out how things are working in other towns, how they do things and how they don't do things. It's interesting to learn that there's very few towns that have an audit committee that sets it up, that there's a panel of volunteers that are the public that review what we do and make sure that we stay above board at all times. We look at the chart as it spreads out and you can see that how the reporting is done. And that first draft of the audit and the first communications about how this process works, it's pretty much standard operating procedures to do it the way we've done it in the past. Commissioners, this is, the audit committee is a very independent group. We're not supposed to interfere with them in any way. The chair of the committee is here today. She's here as a citizen to listen to our conversation. But it's also to better understand what we're hoping to get. We have to be very careful though, as we move and discuss these things, to not interfere with the independent audit committee and their work. So I've done one out of my way, not to send any emails or communications to the audit committee. Even when I saw this agenda item was going to be here today, I didn't send it to her to hope that she'd be here. I'm glad you saw it and came because that's part of the role of this committee is to let them think on their own and tell them their own ways to do things. That said, my hope is that the process goes similarly to how it has in the past. I would like to get politics out of this wherever possible though. I think that's where we get into trouble, especially in a town this small. So I would hope that the work process could work where the town manager, in the past we had a financial director, now we have a bookkeeping firm. So depending on what you call that position in our town, I'd hope that those two paid professionals will turn in all of the paperwork to the independent auditor that the audit committee selects. And questions and responses are back and forth. Communications to make sure that the first draft is as appropriate as possible take place between those professionals before there's a public first draft of a document. That's my hope because there are mistakes and we need to make sure that the professionals are hired and make sure that everything lines up the way it does. And if you look at that chart, you can see that every single town does it in that fashion. When the financial report audit is complete, the first draft is provided to the municipality, who is the municipality prior to the copy. And so the question is, the town of Milton, first draft audit report is reviewed by the town manager and the council treasurer. That adds politics in because that's a council member that's the treasurer in that case. And the town of Millville, first draft within the town is distributed amongst the town manager, the financial director, which in our case would be law and associates, and the finance assistant, which could be any other professional in the office. In the town of Millsboro, they just send it to the finance officer. That's their professional in the office that does it. And then it goes to the elected officials. And the town of Bethany, the finance director as well. Bethany, or Bethel doesn't have a committee, didn't answer the questions, so maybe, I don't know how they do it. Harrington goes to the city manager and to the accountant, back to the way we do it. We have an accountant and a town manager. South Bethany, town manager, finance director, treasurer, these are all employees. Blaine's town administrator and the mayor. Newport, town clerk, and then presented to council. So in that case, it's just the town clerk. And they may be a town clerk type of government like we were years and years and years ago. So with that said, all we're going to have to discussion of what we hope this looks like. But I also want to say, it's not our job. We're not going to make this decision. This is just a discussion. So with that said, I'm going to go here.
Let's get it straight. I think I've got it straight. Past practice is what's been happening as far as I can remember as far as towns been incorporated, was that the initial audit, first review, when I say review, you say turn loosely. The first eyes on that were the town manager and I believe most of the time the mayor, I think.
I think, quite frankly, I think that's new. I think in, because we didn't have a town manager for a little period there, they did it slightly different. I don't know that the mayor always got it. What I do know is that in the past we had the town manager, the chair of the committee, and the auditor.
Right, okay.
And perhaps the financial director too, because that person, in the old days it was, what was her name?
You're asking an old man.
What was the financial director's name? She was just here to ask a question. Nancy McClesman. And now she's the one that did all the work. She probably was involved in those meetings as well.
But that was what was done all along.
Yes.
And of course, then there were questions about somebody making a change. And that just came out, that's why. And somebody hiding things and making a change. So it comes down to how do you, who gets to look at the audit before somebody else gets to look at the audit. Although I think we're making more of it than should be made, I'll be honest with you.
I agree.
The town manager and the employees in the town, in effect, along with the auditor, create the audit report, in effect. I mean, the employees and the town manager give all the documentation there is to the auditor. The auditor sorts that documentation out and if they have any problem with it, they'll come to us. They go back to the town manager and the employees and say, correct this or show me where it's wrong, show me what the problem is. And they go back and forth for a few months. Right Scott?
Yeah. It depends on the period, but typically it's probably 16 to 90 days if there's a back and forth.
So I have a problem. I'm conflicted a bit. Some people think that if the town manager and the chairman of the committee get it before everybody else, they start going to make changes. Some people think that if you give it to the committee before you give it to the town manager, my God, there'll be horrible restraints and it'll make us all look like fools. I don't agree with that either way. I'm really, I have an issue because I'm not 100% one way or the other. So I would like to hear from you people, what do you think?
We'll go this way.
Yeah, for me, any audit I've ever been involved in, and just to adjure me what takes place here, management has to be part of the process. You can't exclude them. And management has responsibility for preparing the financial statements. And that's part of the basis on which the auditor does the work. So you can't exclude management. Management has to know what's going on. There has to be an exchange of information. And that would also pull in law and associates because they're doing the accounting. You have an independent auditor who's involved in this process. They're not going to compromise their value. I mean, they have professional qualifications. They're not going to put themselves in a position to make changes that management says should be made if the auditor doesn't think that they're aware of it. So again, I don't have a problem at all with management being a part of this and it being an interactive process. And I think between those two, you can introduce a draft audit. Something that the town manager is going to be comfortable with, perhaps not entirely happy with. Certainly he's not going to feel like the town is being held out to be foolish or have bad practices. I mean, we, the town manager's been working with law and associates and they're making some really good changes to the overall accounting process. Things that are going to be very positive for the town. So again, that's how the audit report can be produced. Where I have a problem is having some sort of a selective review of the mayor. And I would immediately exclude the mayor because I don't think there's a role there. No more of a role than any other commissioner would have. And I don't think that the audit committee chairman has any specific role over and above the members of the audit committee. So I think once management and the auditor produce the audit report, it can then go to the audit committee chairman who would then distribute it to the members of the audit committee and then you can have a public meeting and talk about that audit report. It's still a draft at that point. You would have draft stamp on every page. You could, if you wanted to, you could ask for copies to be returned. People would have to do so because it is a public document. But you know, you could make that statement recognizing that it's still as a draft. If we follow that kind of process, I would be very comfortable with that. And while we're not trying to interfere in the audit committee's work, I think having that kind of policy in place among us as commissioners, I think would be very helpful and certainly a clear statement to the audit committee of how they can do the work.
Yeah, Gary, I agree with you on that. So you take the mayor out of it, this is a function of how the town operates. It's management of the town. I think that falls squarely on the town manager. Make sure all the documents are supplied by the auditor and what's coming back. And then it becomes a public document. Auditors always ask for more information, so we don't want to get involved in that. You know, that draft might have a couple of questions, like, hey, you still need to look at this or look at that. And that's a function of how the town operates.
So as Commissioner Persson drew it to, the mayor wears two hats. He's a commissioner, but he's also town management. And the auditor should work with the town manager to facilitate the report. But the report is an opinion. And that opinion should go to the audit committee and CC the town manager and the mayor. But it should not go to the town manager to edit the draft first. Because who does the auditor work for? He works for the audit committee, not the town manager. And if you look into the charter and the audit charter, it clearly says the audit committee should review the firm's audit report and assessment of the town's accounting and reporting practices and internal control systems. So it gives the power to the audit committee. It also says the committee shall have the duty to resolve disagreements between management and the auditor regarding financial reporting for purpose of issuing an audit report or related work. So the auditor should work with law ops, they should work with the town manager. But when issuing the opinion, that opinion should go to the audit committee, not to the management first. And there was some debate over an email I sent the audit committee chair. It said, below my comments, comments refer to opinion or feedback. And one of the things I noticed in the RFP is it covered revenue and petty cash, but it missed expenses. So you want to look at what it looked like on the balance sheet. You want to look at the revenue, but you also want to look at how you're spending money. So I would hope that would be non-controversial among everyone.
I think we're missing something. Yeah, you're missing something.
You started with the RFP.
An email that I didn't bring up, but why?
Yeah, but the third thing that's important is the town charter says the audit report needs to be done by August 15th. And their dates were past that date. So the question is, can they just do an RFP that has a different date than the town charter? So I had mentioned that as item three. And then item two, when they had put a letter to management, the letter should be to the audit committee. And the internal control should also go to the audit committee. So that's what's being missed. The audit committee needs to be involved.
Understood. They should, no one's talking about un-inviting the audit committee. In no way, no how. But what you underneath understanding, I didn't bring that up, that you sent an email directly to the audit committee.
Why did I not send it to the audit committee? I sent it to the town manager and the audit committee chair.
Who was copied on that.
No, I did not. I just sent it to the town manager and audit committee chair.
Audit committee chair.
Yes, I didn't send it to the audit committee.
That makes it a public document and now the audit committee's responsibility. My point being is if you wanted to make a change to what he was asked to comment on, you should have sent it to him instead of her, not copied both of them. Because that, and I didn't bring up that you sent an email to anybody. I just said, I said that we have to be careful with how we communicate to the audit committee. And I'm just asking you to be careful. Most of your points I agree with. Like almost always, we agree on a lot of things. The point that we don't agree on is obviously the one about the first draft of the audit itself. And making sure that the town manager and the professionals involved get the chance to look at it before it goes to the audit committee, to the full committee. My opinion is, the way we did it in the past, there was one guy with one opinion, is the town manager, the financial director, or the auditor, the audit person themselves, and the chair of the audit committee should be the ones that look at the first draft and get a chance to go over it one last time before it goes to the full committee because then that document is completely public. It's public.
Actually, in the fore meeting we learned yesterday that what you just proposed would be a public document.
It would be, it would be.
When you have a select group of people, based on a number of holding ruling from Max Walton, and basically you're spending money, that's a public document too. So if you're saying a select committee, would that be?
My point being is if you sent a note that also was copied to the chair that said, this is what your opinion is or how this should be read. And that was without the rest of us. So the purpose for our conversation today was to discuss the process. I'm going to leave it there because the purpose of today was just to discuss this and talk about the process. And I think we've done that, Mr. Carr.
This is a little bit, the charter brought up, is a little bit of, I would use a bad term, I'm using it there, misnomer. Because the fact that they give it to somebody else other than the audit committee or other group is only because they don't have it already. So it's not like, it's not like they made that decision to give it to them.
Before it goes to council. And then for these examples, when those professionals see the report, they do the one last draft before it goes to council. And the only step missing is we have an audit committee.
With all due respect, I will remind you, when I interrupt you next time and make comments, you'll smack me and say, don't interrupt me.
Yes, sir.
Now, I'm trying to be funny so we keep this on later. But it's not because they had a choice to either give it to the audit committee first or give it to somebody else. They, most of them didn't have a choice. That process was different. Was different from what some of them said in our charter, in the audit committee charter. And I'll remind you, the audit committee charter is not exactly the same. It's the way that we decided, the commissioners decided the process should go. If we want to change that process, we can. And I don't, I think we're making way too much issue here on both sides, I'll be honest with you. You know, I say to people, what the hell's the difference if we, what the heck's the difference if we give a document to these three people versus the whole committee? When those three people, or majority of those, the auditor and the employees of the town, made up the document. I mean, they've already, the auditors and the town employees already have their chance to change that document before it comes out, even though it's legal first draft. Of course, legal work.
Stand up.
Just walk past the, past the portion. You don't, there you go. And so, I mean, to say it's going to do irreparable harm if we only give it to, and the town manager won't have a chance to look at it first, I say, he's already had his chance anyway. You know, he's already made all the changes he wants to make. Wait one second, I think, you know, on the other side, you know, to say that the town manager in some way would abuse and use his discretion if he were given what's called the first draft first before the whole committee is ludicrous. You know, I mean, nobody's, nobody here is going to put their job up for a chance of losing their position just because they didn't like $50,000 versus $55,000.
Or problems.
Yeah, and, yeah, I mean, and the same goes for the auditor. To think that the auditor would change something at some valid point in an audit just because the town manager wanted them to, and they wouldn't agree with that and put it out, something they wouldn't agree with, that's ludicrous. The town manager's not going to have that much sway on the auditor. The auditor's not going to lose his license over some town manager wanting to look at it. So, I'm sorry.
Town manager. Again, I don't get to vote on the end of this stuff, but I will tell you.
You're swaying my vote, aren't you?
That the town manager and the town staff got to work closely with the accountant and the auditor to get the final audit. And the numbers are the numbers. I mean, what we're doing is we're writing a report on what's happened over the last 12 months. It's already happened. And so I don't want to be in a position when the draft audit comes out that I'm getting criticized because I've read the narratives, looked at the numbers. It shouldn't be a surprise to me. It shouldn't, there should be no surprises when that draft audit gets released and posted for the audit committee. That's not, that's not the purpose of that document. It's not to create this buildup and then a surprise at the reveal. That's not the purpose of that document. And so it has been past practice, and it was a good past practice, I would argue, that the auditor, the staff, and worked hand in hand. And that the staff was provided an advanced copy of the report that was going out so that they could read it and comment on it. And so back to last year, I did not edit the document. I got a PDF of it to read and comment on, and that's exactly what I did. I can't change numbers that have already been, that have already been expended. I can correct their math if there's a math error or something like that. Or I can say, you know, this is how I would couch this expenditure versus that. But it has to be within their ethical standards to accept my comment. And it has to be within my ethical standards to make the comment. Again, I can't go back and rewrite the history of something that's happened. And so I want to make sure that when we get to August or September, whatever the date that this report comes out, that people understand I have likely read it and know what it says before it's posted on the website. Because let's face it, they've got to send it to me or Ashley to post it on the website. I mean, they can't post it. So we're going to have read this document before it is done. Unless they just bring it to the committee meeting and hand the document out. And that's not what anybody has asked for in the past either. So I'll be the first one to tell you, yes, as soon as that document is handed out, it is by definition now and confirmed that it's a public document. So you can't, you can ask for it back, but what's the point at that point? But it is a draft. So for somebody to run out and say, this is the final, is not correct. It just needs to be, but I just want to be clear that it is, it would be a shock to me if I didn't know anything about what that thing said and we got to the audit committee meeting, we hadn't posted anything in advance, and all of a sudden it says, we've done something horribly backwards or incorrect and we have to go back and do all these adjustments. That should not be what happens at that meeting.
Mr. Muscles.
I think the town manager and the town management need to get a copy ahead of time to be able to comment. My issue is the process. It says clearly, the committee shall have the duty to resolve disagreements between management, which would be the town manager and the auditor. So if the town manager has an issue, he should be sent it to the audit committee to be working with the auditor based on what the current audit committee charter says. So the town manager needs to get that document before the meeting so he can comment and make changes. But the audit committee should be getting that document.
But that would be in the event of an argument or disagreement between the auditor and the town manager. Comments are not necessarily disagreements.
So what would be the harm with emailing the town manager and the audit committee? The auditor emails the town manager and the audit committee that document. And then they have a meeting and the document says draft. And then any issues raised or changed, that's all I'm asking. I'm not asking to exclude the town manager. I'm just asking to include the audit committee.
Perhaps I read your email wrong. But I put a score, it said that you wanted to send it to the committee and not the town manager.
No, both of them. That's what I've been saying all along. Both of them should get the document. And when you run for mayor, you run to change past practice. Past practice is not always the proper practice, but I'm just looking to follow what's already written. I think we want the same thing. I got called out for investment committee and a draft document which was wrong. So I mean, I was on the other end of it. But I just believe, we don't want to repeat the audit committee fiasco last year. We want to do things differently. And I just think that the town manager and the audit committee get it, then there'll be a meeting and things can be finalized. It just makes life easier.
I think we've discussed this thoroughly for the other comments, but now?
So the question will be, with the RFP, what will the process be?
That'll be up to the audit committee. Up to the audit committee. What do they think? I believe they have that flexibility.
I hope they do, but I don't know. RFPs go after the town. Don't we have ultimate say on what the town puts out as an RFP? When I say that, I mean.
I don't want to slow the process down. We're into fiscal year, we've ended our fiscal year.
So the question, our audit chair here.
So the question is like, for instance, expenses to include that, where, so revenue and expenses. Do we have the suggestion? Can it be agreed upon like that and the date to move up the data?
What are we talking about?
The RFP.
RFP and RFP. Is it because we're not supposed to? This guy didn't get it. What RFP are you talking about?
The ones that are emailed and the one that was given at the audit committee.
Hi, Susan.
Sure. Who are you? What's your name? Why are you so?
This is the way I thought it was really going to sound Saturday. Julie Johnson, audit committee chair, and then another face unfortunately.
Fortunately.
Fortunately, sorry. So I guess my position with the RFP was, I worked with, we had our meeting, we discussed it. The committee gave me authority to do final revisions. I sent out a final draft to the committee based on the things we discussed, based on other input that they had. They gave me additional comments. And I then sent it to the town manager for publication. I was asked by Commissioner Moskowitz to send out the RFP and I did not reply because I did not think, even though it was the committee liaison, my opinion was, and based on the conversations that we had, was that we were independent from the commissioners. So his comments were not relevant to the RFP that we were putting out. So I know the town manager then did send him a copy as well as I think a couple of the other commissioners' copy of the RFP, which I don't have any, it's not that I have any problems with it. But my, what I was told is that we were independent in this. It was not the commissioner's responsibility to be commenting, to be helping to create the RFP. So that was kind of the position that I had. I don't, and as far as the dates, as far as, I realize the town charter says August 15th. I put September 1st because we're on a very different schedule because we haven't been in this position before. We've had our auditor at the end of our fiscal year in the past. We don't have one now. So I extended, but if you also look at the RFP, I put a note at the bottom that said, these dates may change once the auditor is hired. So I left some flexibility in there, but I didn't think it was fair to put crunched timetables on an auditor when we don't even know when we're going to have an auditor hired. So that's my position.
Thank you. Now I'm trying to understand. So the committee wrote an RFP.
Correct.
And is that the same RFP that went to Commissioner Moskowitz somehow? Almost, yes. I didn't get it. You should. I'm sure if I had the question of. Sure, yes, we may not actually, yes. And Commissioner Moskowitz asked, Scott presented to him, so he did. And as we should, we all try to work together and make sure everybody's doing everything the way we're supposed to do it. Yeah, but the audit committee goes to RFP period. That, I believe that to me is what our charter, right? I believe the charter could then, but I'm not sure by your expression.
I wish I could provide better direction on this question. I mean, I think in the end, the audit committee doesn't actually hire the auditor, but recommends hiring and then you all have to be bound by the contract, not the audit committee. But that's not, that doesn't answer some of your questions about the process.
In fairness, the audit committee chair sent an email to the town manager saying, if you see anything glaringly wrong, please provide feedback. So I saw three things, expenses were left off, the dates. So I saw three things, expenses were left off, the dates, and then just it should refer to the letter to the internal control, should say audit committee, not management. Based on the two charters.
You must have got missed. Okay, all right, this is just discussed.
So wait, so the commissioners were changing the RFP?
No. We're not, this is discussed, I don't want to present it, this is, we're not voting on anything on this topic?
Well, there's something to be voted on, there's already policy on it. So the question, and maybe this question for the solicitor, if the charter says one thing, can it just be changed?
What charter?
The town charter.
You're referring to the town charter?
The town charter says the auditor is on or before the fifteenth day of August following the town's fiscal year and shall deliver their report. So is there a process, if that can't be failed?
Well, the charter, the charter binds us, it does not bind the auditor. So I don't know how, you can't just legislate, I mean, if you could just legislate that the audit would be done next week, you would do that, but it won't.
It won't get done.
It won't get done. So I don't think that, I mean, I think you should endeavor to work within the, work within the timeframes that the charter identifies, and you shouldn't drag your feet for the purpose of binding the charter, or making it impossible for the charter deadlines to be complied with. But I think if you get an audit report after that date, that's just, is just a reality.
Well, we should probably request that date, and say, you know, if possible, or something like that, but by charter, we're required, you know, the RFP is just a date by charter, we have to request the date. You know, there can be extenuating circumstances or something to that effect. But we shouldn't request, like, the charter says August fifteenth, we shouldn't request in the RFP September first. We should request the fifteenth with the caveat to it or something possible.
That's, that was one of the reasons that's asked.
We've discussed at length, I remember long.